It's awful quiet in here tonight. It's good to see everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Oh, Commissioner Tisdale, I'm sorry, of course. Good evening, I want to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. Today is November 5th. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdall.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes and review the minutes? Are there any revisions or things we need to discuss? Do I hear a move to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tisdall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Abstain.
Chair Beck. Yes. So we'll just move down the line, starting with Commissioner Finch. Do you have any reports?
No report tonight, thank you.
No report.
Nothing, thank you.
Went to the Port's open house. It was good to see what they're doing down there. Some exciting stuff.
They're breaking ground on the residential.
Broken.
Broken.
Yeah, it's broken.
That is exciting.
Yeah.
How's the hotel doing? Did you hear any?
Second, the second of floor is about to open.
Oh, nice.
Or may have opened. Not in sequence, I don't know. They started, Alan might.
I don't, I don't know.
I was just curious.
It's doing well.
I know the owner a little bit, and he's very excited and tons of interest in getting some good bookings with some groups and.
Terrific.
Yes.
The restaurant's good? We'll have to check that out.
I attended the Hope Works grand opening reception a couple of weeks ago. A lot of things have happened since then, but it was pretty impressive. They had a big crowd, impressive building.
Nice, nice. And I have no report. So staff comments?
I'll reserve my comments until item two on the agenda.
Okay. All right, at this time, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to a particular issue that is not on the agenda tonight, I'd like to invite you to the podium. I think we have one person, and if I mispronounce your name, I do apologize. Is it Gene Rittman?
That's correct.
Hi.
Hi. Never in my life did I expect a stamp to allow to plant outrage. Over and over. Your land use manager, Steve Inglesby, illegally let Jimmy Johns tear out 2,000 square feet of landscaping.
I'm sorry. A certain level of decorum, and we don't personally attack people when we're at the lectern. If you have a specific issue you'd like to address.
I'll just say, his land use, he's the land use manager, then.
That's still a personal attack. We're talking about issues.
Okay, well, the issues are, he is letting businesses violate all zoning laws in exchange for kickbacks. I have proof. He lies in written testimony.
You continue to identify an individual, and that is a personal attack. So if you can speak to a particular issue that you would like to address.
Oh, yes, okay, well, our city, Tree City Everett, if you look around, you'll see it's nearly treeless. That's not by accident. It's because we have people, a particular person in the planning department who is not requiring.
Again, I'm going to have to ask you, and I will cut the microphone if you can, and I think the microphone has been cut.
Okay. EFC 19.35.
I'm sorry, ma'am, at this time?
That's enough.
That's enough.
Okay, may I ask how I can present this information to you?
If you'd like to make it part of the public record, please just write a letter, and it will go in as part of the record. But I would encourage you not to attack individuals, because when you do so, that completely does not lend you to any credibility. If you have a particular issue.
You can approve.
You're welcome to enclose whatever you would like to in that letter, but I would have.
I apologize. I've never been to this meeting. I apologize for any decorum that I violated. That was not my intent. It's a lot of personal pain that I've experienced from this, and the fact that I have property next to McDonald's and Jimmy Johns has, and that has caused me an extraordinary amount of pain in what they have done to me, so I apologize.
I apologize, I am sorry to hear that you are in pain, but again, if you would like to constructively address this, I would take the time to sit down and write out your concerns and whatever evidence you would like to use to support your concerns, and it will be looked at.
Okay, I did present you all with some evidence. I presented you with Jimmy Johns, the plans that were approved, and the blackened areas are the areas that are required by zoning laws to have landscaping on them, and I have listed the second page, the list of all zoning laws that were not met on that property. And that's like 30 zoning laws you'll see before you. Those were not met on the property, and then after I complained about them, they went to extraordinary steps to prevent the violations from being corrected.
Okay.
People that I knew that they were in violation.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to any other issue that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number one, which is public hearing for Metro, oh, sorry, we'll have a staff presentation first.
Thank you, Davis Stahlheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and this is a request from Dennis Wagner and Kenneth Dayton to amend both the Metro Everett SubArea Plan and the zoning code with respect to heights on property. It would go from four floors up to six to eight floors. The additional two floors are only available through the city's height incentive program, so it'd be six floors by right and potentially up to eight floors. This is a outline of what the property is. It's along Everett Avenue, just to the east of QFC. You can see up here is the QFC up in the corner there. It's on both sides of Everett Avenue. It does include the south side of Everett Avenue where there's Auto Parts Store and also the school district's maintenance facility is there, so this is between McDougal and Rainier Avenue. Couple pictures, this is actually taken from the QFC site. As you see here, the tennis courts, which are now doubling as a parking lot for the school, for North Middle School, which is just to the north of the property that is subject to the height amendment. This is on the opposite side of the property, on the east side of the property. It is owned for residential use on the other side of McDou, other side of Rainier, excuse me. And this is a corner building that's owned by Mr. Dayton, I believe, that's right there on Everett Avenue, in the corner of Everett Avenue, and this is facing back towards downtown Everett Avenue, kind of facing south and west. So in our review, and you have a staff report and recommendations here, some of the things, just kind of point out a few things. First is that the north side of Everett Avenue at this location is designated for transit-oriented development. That's because of its proximity to frequent transit on Broadway, and the Metro Everett Plan identifies TOD streets as being where taller buildings are expected. And the way that we drafted the code in this instance, and it's the only instance that it exists, is that the north side of Everett Avenue has both a four-story minimum and a four-story maximum, so there's no range, so you have to build four stories and nothing more, is how we drafted that on this block. One of the issues really that in our review that just kind of came up, that's probably the one issue to look at in more particular is that buildings should be designed so that shadows on public property and the adjacent residential properties are minimized, and so we found some nice web tools that actually kind of looked at shadow analysis on this. As many of you know, North Middle School is on the other side of 26th Street, and so what this shows here is the, at the, on March 20th, is that the shadow getting to the residential properties would be this black line, and so it just barely hits the residential properties and doesn't get anywhere close to getting to where the school is, and so that's modeled at a six-floor height, so looking at six floors. So based on this, it's looking like the project is not going to cast shadows on any public spaces and minimizes some of the shadows, and these are just evening shadows that would be on some of the residential properties. So based on our review of this, staff does recommend approval and have a resolution to support the amendment of the Metro Everett Plan and the zoning code both.
Can I ask a question? Why is that, was that area determined to be designated for four stories only originally? Do you know?
Well, in a lot of the areas, we actually, let me go back to this, you can see kind of the purple color going back this way, we actually took that whole stretch of Everett Avenue from there all the way out and did four stories, and partly is because of the residential neighborhood to the north there, and I don't think that we really kind of scrutinized went into this block itself, because there aren't the residential properties to the north here that like there are in the other places. So in large measure, we were trying to avoid casting the shadow into the neighborhoods and said, so had a lower height there. So that's largely it, and again, this is probably within a half mile of where we hope where the light rail station will land, as well as being along a, close to a frequent transit corridor.
Also, I guess, question, it wasn't clear to me, what exactly are they wanting to build there?
Well, it's, the zoning doesn't change, so it's an urban mix zone, so it's subject to all the standards of the urban mix zone. Because it's on the north side of the street, because it's a transit-oriented development street, there are actually some limitations of what you can do on the ground floor, and so limitations on different uses, so we're trying to have more of an active use there. But one of the potentials is to have more capacity there, to have residential on top, is one of the things, and we would expect some kind of retail office at least at the ground floor type of thing.
Any other questions?
Is it only the building on the corner of Rainier that is considering a change, or are they going to develop that whole side of the block?
Well, this whole, this whole square is subject to the height amendment.
Right.
The applicants are on the north side of Everett Avenue, so the main applicant, Dennis Wagner, owns this property, and Mr. Leighton owns this property, so they're here and they could probably answer some of those questions, but I think there's some interest in maybe having a coordinated development of that whole north side of Everett Avenue.
So there's not a particular project being proposed at this time? This is just for future?
Correct. This would allow for, the potential for a project to start getting designed that would take advantage of taller building heights, more capacity.
Has there been any public comment?
We have received no public comments. We reached out to the school district, because we did include their property, and I have that in my notes, they didn't have any concerns with their property being included in this, and had no concerns about it.
And any contemplated change to the zoning for the properties further to the east?
No, no change. Further to the east?
Further to the east, not in the hatched area?
No, just the hatch area is the only thing, and just a height amendment request. All the underlying zoning remains the same.
On page five of the document that you sent to us, there's a diagram showing the 35-foot height restriction up to 30 feet from the property line. Is that specifically what is proposed to be amended, or will that remain?
That remains, and so what that is, is on the backside of this property here is that because the heights are shorter here in its residentially zone, is that they'd actually have to step that back, and so that's just more mitigation for the tallness of buildings on the backside of the property. So that remains in place.
Okay, so they'd be permitted to reach six feet after that?
Six floors.
That, right, six floors after the 30 feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
That, well, if there's a tennis court there, are there houses? They're not shown there.
The tennis court is all these lots right here, so that's, that's this area, actually and up here as well, I think.
So there aren't any houses that would be shaded on that, behind that block, then?
No, it's these houses that one shading analysis that I showed you.
Okay, so.
Is right, right here in this area, and the tennis courts are right in this area, and North Middle School is up here.
Yeah.
So just a little bit in the very evening, this is at almost 6:00 in the evening on March 20th, it shows that there'd be some shading that gets into that area.
Any other questions before we open up to public comment? Okay, at this time, do I have anybody signed up? I don't think I do, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item?
I guess I could.
You're welcome to.
I'm only doing speaking, do I speak from here?
It's just us. Come on up. No, you're fine. We're pretty casual. Just if you don't mind, your name and your address?
My name is Dennis Wagner. What address do you, I have several addresses.
Whichever one is your residence would be fine.
Okay, the one I'm living is 9228 176th Street Northwest, Stanwood, Washington. And I'm Dennis Wagner, and I've been at that property over 20 years, and I started a real estate firm here in Everett, Downtown Dennis Real Estate, and I truly want to be out of town, Dennis, please help me. So I'm just simply hoping that we can get the zoning up to where most of the developers, they like to do six stories and not eight, but because two on the bottom or whatever, you know, cement and wood, so we're hoping for that. There's a lot of people that have come to us and would like to have that happen, we're right next to the market, we own half of the street there, we've been paying the taxes there for 20 years on that street, so I would, that's my family, and I would hope that we could do this. I'm not, I'm no longer in the building, I moved to 37th and Kobe, so if you want to come by, it's a nice spot for us. So we are, we plan to make the building look a lot nicer than it looks, fix the signage, paint the building, upgrade it a little bit, and if anything happened there, wouldn't happen for a couple of years anyway, so we still have an income flow there. So that's all I could say right now, I hope I did okay.
Does anybody want to move to close the public hearing?
So moves.
Second.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Chair Beck.
So I have before me Planning Commission Resolution Number 1915, a resolution recommending approval of amendments to the Metro Everett SubArea Plan Heights Map and Development Standards in the Zoning Code Regarding REVV 19-004.
Move to adopt Resolution 19-15.
I second that.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Chair Beck.
Yes, and I want to thank Mr. Wagner for coming up and speaking on this property. I know it was a little unexpected. Okay, so.
Chair Beck?
Yes.
Related question, I brought up the zoning to the east, is that, are those properties to the east also limited to a minimum and a maximum of four stories?
The TOD designation ends on this property, so they don't have a minimum.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Any other questions on this agenda item before we move on? All right, so agenda item number two, sounds like we're getting a planning update.
And just a few comments, four, four things that I'd like to share with you tonight, and the first one relates to the action that the Planning Commission took on the supportive housing amendments at the last meeting, and at that meeting, the Commission made recommendations to the council concerning amending the supportive housing regulations. Part of the Commission's recommendation was to regulate supportive housing in multifamily and commercial zones differently than standard multifamily housing is regulated in those zones. In reviewing this recommendation, the city attorney has advised staff that we cannot regulate multifamily housing for disabled persons more restrictively than standard multifamily housing in these zones, and that for reasons that, similar to the conversation we had a couple of years ago about clinics, and so that's under the state, or excuse me, Federal Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. And so consequently, the ordinance will be revised to treat supportive housing in multifamily and commercial zones the same as standard multifamily housing is regulated. The specific items that had been recommended by the Commission that will not be included in the ordinance include, A, requiring public notice and meeting prior to filing an application for supportive housing, for a supportive housing project located in a multifamily or commercial zone with the city; B, requiring supportive housing in those zones to be located within one-quarter mile walking distance of a public transit stop with a sidewalk or safe walking path; and C, a management plan for the supportive housing. The revised ordinance still maintains the Commission's recommendation to not allow supportive housing in single-family zones, it to, also to amend the definition of supportive housing, to make it consistent with the state definition that was passed earlier this year, and to change the, amend the off-street parking standard. So that will be going forward, looks like we'll do a briefing on November 13th with the city council public hearing on the 27th. Happy to respond to any questions if you have them at this time.
Question I have, what's the rationale behind the reduction in required parking?
It was not a reduction, it was the amended standard, we did have a standard that was one parking space per four bedrooms for supportive housing. The Commission has recommended that that change require a parking study and the parking, the amount of parking to be determined by the planning director and the city engineer. There is still the opportunity for somebody to, through that parking study, to request a reduction, but not to let it be less than what it was prior under the current code. So in actuality, it might increase the parking standard, but really to have that parking be based upon what the anticipated demand is, based upon the type of supportive housing that might be proposed.
So the, the parking standard is potentially, it's not a decrease to the previous supportive housing parking standard, but is it a decrease to the multifamily standard?
It could be less than, yeah, in all likelihood, it would be less restrictive than the multifamily parking standard.
And as a multifamily developer, could one ask to submit a transportation study to reduce their parking requirement?
That opportunity exists in our code, and it depends upon a number of transportation demand management solutions to reduce parking demand that could be a part of that analysis.
So essentially, we're trying to treat these uses as the same use?
As far as the use is concerned, yes, as far as the parking standard, it's unlikely that standard market rate housing would ever be allowed to have the same parking standard that a supportive housing project could based upon the parking studies that we have seen for supportive housing, because many of the residents are disabled and do not drive, standard market rate housing, it would be hard to imagine a project that would be able to reduce their parking standard based on standard occupancy that we see in most multifamily developments.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no more questions on that item, the second item is the November 19th public hearing on the Housing Hope Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone has been canceled. Housing Hope has asked the city to carry over the application until next year's docket cycle, so that they can revise the application. We will begin the docket cycle earlier in 2020 than we typically do, and that we have in all the years since we started doing GMA planning, but that's because we need to consider a number of changes in connection with the rething zoning project. So we expect to have that process starting in the first quarter of 2020. In the meantime, we advise the Planning Commission not to speak to people outside of the public forum here at the Planning Commission about the proposal, because it's still an active application, it will be amended, we've been told by Housing Hope, they'll make some changes, and when those changes have been submitted, we'll make those changes available to the public on our website. Any questions about that one?
Is that on the same site, the ball field, or is this in a, the one that's in their parking lot?
This is for the Norton property that is the ball field, and so we haven't seen the changes yet, they've described them to us verbally, but rather than me repeating those for you, I.
Oh, I got you.
Wait until we have something that we can point to. So it still involves the Norton Ball Field site.
And is that single-family?
It is currently zoned single-family, the request has been submitted for amending the comprehensive plan map to multifamily and the zoning to multifamily zone.
Okay. I just thought I missed something in your last presentation, but you cleared it up, thank you.
Was the, so as I understand it, they've asked to postpone the consideration of that change, was the, the change to the timing of the docket cycle, was that anticipated in advance of the request to postpone, or was it at the same time? Had we contemplated post, or, sorry, had we contemplated expediting the docket cycle before the applicant asked to postpone?
Yes, we were going to have an earlier docket cycle next year because of the work that we're doing around the rething zoning.
Great, thank you.
Okay, third item, as we were preparing information for the 2020 city budget, it occurred to me that the Commission would probably be interested in hearing about some of our current development activity, I don't normally cover that type of thing in presentations and, but I thought it might be good for you to just understand the amount of activity that we're looking at currently. In South Everett, we have a number of multifamily and townhouse projects with about 82 housing units in various stages, from land use application to being constructed at the current time. There's another pending, large pending project with more than 350 apartment units that we expect will be subject of an application very soon. In North Everett, we have approximately 110 apartment units for which the city has issued building permits that are either under construction or soon will be, including 124 student housing units on North Broadway, 217 apartments in two projects in the downtown, 203 in the Delta Neighborhood, and 266 on the waterfront that Commissioner Tisdall mentioned earlier, the groundbreaking for last week. There have also been preliminary discussions with other developers for up to another 275 apartment units downtown, also at the waterfront Hotel Indigo, opened last month in the Port's waterfront place, master plan area. For the riverfront, permits have been issued for the infrastructure and utilities. For the riverfront, permits have been issued for the infrastructure and utilities on the riverfront property that the commission reviewed earlier this year and approved an amendment for the mixed-use site. Also, the Simpson site, south of the mixed-use property, is under construction with the third and final phase of development. And when that is complete, the third phase is complete, Simpson site will have 235 single-family detached homes there and probably the last large-scale single-family development the city will ever see. Looking forward to 2020 on the riverfront, we foresee the first phase, we will see the first phase of 295 apartment units in for permits as well as interest in commercial development on, on the mixed-use site. And looking, continuing to look forward to 2020, and these aren't really projects like I just covered, but we will begin working with Sound Transit to do planning work around the Everett Link Extension, the light rail transit line from Linwood to the Everett Station area. We've been talking with Sound Transit about the planning process. And along with our Rethink Zoning Project, we will begin talking about planning around light rail stations and preparing for our 2023 update, the city's GMA Comprehensive Plan. So a few processes that are kind of going to be parallel to one another, but will inform each process, will inform the other. Our process will inform Sound Transit's plan. Sound Transit's plans will inform some of the updates we'll need to make for our GMA Comprehensive Plan update in 2023. In preparation for the 2023 GMA Plan Update, we will begin working with other cities and Snohomish County to update our countywide planning policies to be consistent with the PSRC's Vision 2050 Regional Growth Strategy, which the PSRC will adopt in May of next year. The Growth Management Act requires us to extend our growth planning horizon out an additional eight years to 2043 in our next update. And while we don't anticipate significant changes to the current CPPs as a result of Vision 2050, it really is a major undertaking to get all the cities and the county coordinating on that planning process through the established Snohomish County tomorrow and process and adoption by the Snohomish County Council. That would be anticipated to happen in 2021, but we will soon get started with that even before Vision 2050 is adopted. Also, at the countywide level, we've begun work on updates to the buildable lands analysis, which will provide all jurisdictions with some detailed data about the amount of undeveloped and redevelopable land within their plans so that we can all determine what land use changes may be required to accommodate our projected growth while maintaining a fairly stable urban growth boundary. We will, as we get into early next year, we'll probably start scheduling some of these items for either discussions or some, some briefings to get into some of the details around this planning work. Particularly, I think we'll definitely be continuing to talk about Rethink Zoning and some housing, a housing action plan that we have received a grant for from the State Department of Commerce that we will use to help prepare some of the housing-related information around light rail station areas. So with that, do you have any questions for either David or myself about any of this information?
Any questions?
It's a great update, thank you.
And I, it is a great update.
Oh.
I, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead. David's got something.
Oh, I was saying, I think I had, Ellen and I had talked that we weren't going to have a meeting on November 19th, but we actually are having one. And we're going to have presentations on the Housing Regional Task Force, the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force from the county, representative from Alliance for Housing Affordability, and Becky McQuarrie from our staff talking about the housing strategy. So we're going to actually talk about kind of bigger picture housing policy, get some presentations and get some feedback from you at the next meeting on the 19th. So.
The next meeting after that will be December 3rd. We will have a meeting. December 3rd.
You said won't?
We will.
Will.
December 3rd.
Hearing on the Climate Action Plan on December 3rd. And also we'll be working on building heights for the whole city. So unveiling a, a new map draft, concept.
A new, new metro?
For the whole city. Metro times 26, I think, is something like that.
I'm going to ask you one quick question. I'm going to put you on point a little bit. How did Sound Transit receive the Metro Everett Plan in terms of the ideas that the city had about where the station location would be? How the tracks, are they going to actually use that as part of their alternatives in developing the EIS document? Or how are we doing there?
I think, to your original question, how do they receive it politely? But they reminded us that the decision as to where the station is to be located is going to be made by Sound Transit. But I do believe that they will use that as one of the alternatives. They have to look at different alternatives through the environmental impact statement that they'll be preparing. And that'll be a few years down the road before we get to that stage. But we've made the case that we think that that location serves both the station area, the needs of Sound Transit, and for transit-oriented development in our downtown. Better than the location that is shown in their representative plan that went to the voters that had the station south of the Everett Station building, closer to the freeway. And so, you know, they, they're well aware of our position. A lot more analysis has to occur, a lot more public input, outreach and public input. And so we'll be working very closely with Sound Transit as well as with Snohomish County and the city of Linwood as the light rail line planning progresses from Linwood North through unincorporated Snohomish County and back into the city of Everett so that there'll be lots of opportunities for all of the station locations to, there will be alternatives looked at for each of them.
Terrific. The fact that they're considering it as an alternative is a victory.
I'm sure that they will. They haven't identified the alternatives, but I'm pretty sure that because it's shown in our plan as our preferred location, that they will show that as one of the alternatives.
Nice.
Ellen, the update you gave us, if you extrapolate that out, you know how you always taught us, we get about X amount of housing per year and we've made decisions moving forward on that. Will, will this cause any wave in that? Or is it just all coming at once as opposed to throughout the year?
Well, the numbers that I gave you here, I think for all of the projects that either are under construction or we believe seriously will be under construction, you know, some of the numbers that I gave you, I wasn't, I wouldn't include in this number, but that was a little bit over 1,500 housing units. And that is an increase over what we would normally see in a year. But some of these will be built over, you know, more than, more than a year. And so, you know, at the end of the year, we get our building permit totals from Building Department and, and we can extrapolate those into population gain. And so our, our population gains are hopefully beginning to inch up, but it's not the drastic vertical line that has to occur if we're going to meet the regional targets that are currently in our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, I think that's it. I think we're adjourned.
Thank you.